I call this pre-meeting briefing of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on May 2, 2024. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda item for the regular board meeting scheduled at 7:00 PM on May 2, 2024. For the record, board members present are Tara Herbocic, Sally Derrick, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Iliana Garza Rojas, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. The next item is Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose prior to the opening of the meeting. Ms. Canada, I have one here. Do we have any additional? Okay. So before we begin, I will remind our audience of the board's procedures for handling Audience for Guests. Anyone interested to speak in person during Audience for Guests must have completed a form and listed the topic they wish to discuss prior to the start of the meeting. I would like to also remind everyone that the board is transitioning to an online speaker participation form that must be completed prior to 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. This will go into full effect in August 2024. Each speaker will be allowed to speak once during Audience for Guests. Speakers designated as stakeholders will be allowed a maximum of three minutes, and speakers designated as non-stakeholders will be allowed a maximum of one minute to address the board as dictated by Board Policy BED Local. Because the board wants to hear from as many of you as possible while also keeping the meeting running efficiently, groups of more than five people who want to present a particular viewpoint on a topic should appoint one person to speak on behalf of their group. Please remember that the board cannot deliberate on any subject that is not included in the agenda for this meeting. Board members will listen to comments but will not respond or answer questions. We ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own child. The timer will be shown on the screen in front of you, and will begin when you arrive at the podium to speak. Again, the speaker's presentation will be limited to three minutes. We'll begin with stakeholder comments. A speaker's presentation is three minutes. So our first and only speaker is Nicholas Ornellis. Come on up to the microphone.
Hi. My name is Nicholas Ornellis, and I'm here to advocate for not only myself but also this district, the students and teachers of CFB ISD. I'm not a stranger to advocating for students and teachers and myself. I've done that my entire career at CFB ISD, and there are multiple people that would testify to that. In contemplating what I should do, what I should utilize this three minutes for, I kept landing on the fact that it's really not enough time to defend my livelihood. Nevertheless, I'm still going to attempt. I've sent a email correspondence kind of describing what has taken place this year and prior years that has brought us to this point, which I knew would have been inevitable. And I tried to prevent, and I've asked for help at multiple levels. And what I would say is that I've exhausted all resources, and I'm at the last resource to utilize. And in a goal that's mentioned on our website, it's that CFB ISD would like to exhaust all resources. That's a goal of ours, so I'm asking that y'all exhaust all resources in determining the recommendation that's been brought forward as far as my contract. Prior to April 5th, so less than a month ago, there was no indication that my contract was in jeopardy. I was told I was a great teacher, that I'm always advocating for the kids, I'm a great coach, so I'm really confused as to what brought us to this point. And in asking about that, I was never provided any information. I was only told that it's in the best interest of the district. As we see, we're already running out of time here, so I'll just end it with this. If you're an advocate for mental health, if this district's an advocate for mental health, I implore you to look more into this situation and exhaust all resources before making this determination, before voting on the recommendation. If you believe in a restorative district, same thing. If you believe in protecting victims over abusers, I implore you to look into this situation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ornellis. The administration will follow up with you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three. Dr. Eldridge, are there any reports for administration?
Our first report is from Mr. Guerra on our financial reports. Item 5C.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. Good evening, Ms. Hatfield and the rest of our board. As you know, this is the monthly financial report that we give to y'all to update how we all, how we look financially every month. So on the first page of the report, you can see the financials that you have in front of you tonight. They run through the end of March, which now completes the seventh month of our fiscal year. And you can see at the bottom right, we have about 79% of our revenue collected to date, which is good for the district at this point and what we expect to see. On page two of your report, the expenses you can see show around 53% of the budget expended through March, which again, through seven months of the year, we're looking really good as we continue to watch expenditures over time, all that kind of thing, to make sure we stay in line and under budget as the, as the year comes to a finish. So if you have any questions on the financials, I'll take them now.
Mr. Shackman?
I haven't figured out the right space on the form, I don't think, but under capital funds, it looks to me like we show zero balance across the board for bond funds, and I thought we had sold some bonds already and had accrued some income from those that's been invested and done whatever.
Yes, sir. The capital funds, we did sell the first 400 million of the 2023 bond, and that has funded, we're starting like stuff with architectures and stuff, but it's at the very bottom of the page. You can see there's 410 million of the amended budget.
Mr. Guerra, can you tell us what page you're on?
On the very first page at the bottom. We're just capital project funds.
Thank you.
That's where our capital expenditures are.
Got it, got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Additional comments or questions? Give us one second.
I will note it. I know it says 410 because remember, we sold the bonds at a premium, which means we actually got allocated more money. Our debt is the 400 million, but we actually got allocated a little bit more money, so we have 410.
Any additional comments or questions? Okay, are we ready to move forward? Okay.
Okay, our next report, thank you, Mr. Guerra, is Dr. Hamlin and our low attendance waiver from TEA.
I'm ready for a joke.
I said no jokes.
Unless you were told no jokes.
I'm a very serious person. All right. Dr. Eldridge, Ms. Hatfield, members of the board, the Texas Education Agency allows districts to actually apply for a low attendance waiver. Whenever on an instructional day, that day you have 10% less of attendance than you did on what your average was for the year before. And as you know, it wasn't the Texas Rangers that did this, but it was the solar eclipse day. So on April the 8th, as you see, we averaged on that day 80.04% for our attendance rate. Last year, our attendance rate for the entire year was 92.68%, so that difference of 12.64% allows us to actually apply for our low attendance waiver. And what they do is they actually take that day out of the calculation. So if you have 175 days for the school year, instructional days, they'll only calculate 174 days. So as you can see, on that day, we had 14 elementary campuses, five middle school campuses, two high school campuses, and our two centers that actually were more than 10% below that 92.68%. So it is our recommendation that the board approve us the opportunity to actually apply for this low attendance waiver.
Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Derrick?
Dr. Hamlin, I just want to ask for just general knowledge. Why does it matter? Like, why do we need it? Like, why do we need to apply for a waiver? This is just me asking, because I don't know the answer, and I figure everyone else might want to know. Like, why is it important for us to do, when something like this happens, first of all, we need kids in school, but why is it important when they don't show up that we need to do something like this?
We were actually funded through ADA, and that's how we receive our revenue and a large portion of the revenue. And for taking this day out, because we took a big hit, so when they average 80%, with all the other days, that number will be below what we want it to be. So it's really about funding.
Any additional questions or comments? Dr. Eldridge?
Thank you, Dr. Hamlin. Our next report comes from Kim Holcomb, and it's our recommendation of science textbook adoption.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge and President Hatfield and distinguished members of the board. I am here tonight with our Director of Secondary, well, actually, all levels of science, Kristi McLean. She has been leading the work around our science adoption, and so I wanted to kind of get us started on what we're going to talk about and kind of how we got where we are today. So every year, TEA calls for a proclamation of a review of instructional materials. They will identify what subject areas need to be reviewed, and many times, it is aligned to when there's going to be a change in the standards from the State Board of Education. And when those standards change, many times then the instructional materials have to change to get in alignment with that. So this year, Proclamation 24, our adoption that we are needing to recommend a update of adopted materials for the next eight years would be in our science area K through 12. Ms. McLean and I met early on in July and talked about the timeline for the year, events that were going to be needed to be scheduled so that we had voice from all stakeholders, surveys, and lots of opportunities for our teachers, our parents, our administrators to kind of know what is out there for us to review for adoption this year. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McLean to go over kind of the process that she led through this entire year, and then we'll do a recommendation of materials at the end.
All right. Hello, Dr. Eldridge and President Hatfield and members of the board. Good to see you again. So I'm happy to share with you our process for textbook adoption review. So we began this process, like Kim said, at the start of the school year by first forming a textbook adoption committee that was made up of K-12 science teachers that represent our 38 awesome campuses, but also all of the courses that we offer. And then we made sure that our committee also had the voices of our advanced academics, our technology team, special education, as well as multilingual. So we wanted to have representation of our diverse community so that everybody was able to offer their voice. In addition to forming the committee, we had to have a timeline, so we put together a timeline of all of our adoption committee meetings, as well as when the public would be able to view these materials as well, which you guys approved on November 2nd, so thank you for that. We've made it to the end, which is exciting. In Texas, like Kim mentioned, we are go big or go home, so it's not just adoption of new materials, but we also have new K-12 science standards to implement next year as well. So this really is a big year for science. All right. If I can work this. Okay. So with guidance from TEA and then the Texas Resource Review rubrics, as well as our Texas Science Education Leadership Association, we developed a rubric, and then we really refined that rubric with our textbook adoption committee to meet the needs of CFB ISD and the students that we serve and our teachers that facilitate that learning. Our committee members reviewed materials from December of 2023 through February of 2024. They reviewed it digitally, in print, and through in-person and digital presentations from the vendors. While our committee member's voice was vital to the process, we also wanted to have other stakeholders involved to review and provide feedback. So all campus science teachers not on the adoption committee from elementary, middle, and high were provided time to explore the materials either digitally or in print and through virtual vendor presentations. Teachers had the opportunity to provide their feedback either to their campus committee representative or through a form that went directly to me and was shared with the committee. I went one too far. We had opportunities for the public to also review the materials under consideration. So these were offered in-person at the ESDC in the Texas Room from January 29th to February 2nd, and then digitally on our CFB website from March 5th to March 18th. There were feedback forms that they could fill out, available in Spanish and English, and then for the in-person, we collected feedback just in print. This is what was on our CFB website. It's got, this is just a snippet of it, but it had links for the community members to access the materials digitally, and then a password to log in for elementary and then six through eight, and then high school. So after our committee collected all of that information, we carefully considered the input from the campus teams and the public comments, and then also the very thorough review that was conducted by our committee members. And these are the following recommendations that we would like to propose to the Board of Trustees for your approval. So for elementary science, K through five, we're recommending HMH Into Science with the addition of STEM Scopes Digital for fifth grade. For middle school, we're recommending McGraw-Hill Texas Science for six through eight, and for high school, we have all of our courses, so biochemistry, IPC, physics, astronomy, and then environmental science, we're recommending McGraw-Hill. And then we have Bedford, Freeman, and Worth to support our AP Physics 1 and 2 and C.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yes. So we just wanted to add for y'all's information, these, high school has been with McGraw-Hill, so these are familiar to them and the teachers. Of course, they'll get professional development because they've, they've updated, and there's lots of new gadgets to learn, and as well as STEM Scopes and HMH, these are going to fit right in with what our teachers have already been doing, which was part of our consideration of the committee. All right. I'll open it up for any questions, comments?
Thank you very much. Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Benavides?
How much time did the community members and the committee members have to review the, the new product?
So the community members had the two opportunities from January 29th through February 2nd, and it was in the Texas Room from 8:00 to 4:00 every day for them to come and visit in person, and then March 5th through the 18th, online. And then the second part was the committee members. So they started their review in December. I think it was December 8th and finished February 22nd.
How many members were on the committee?
There were, I want to say off the top of my head, 38, but let me take a look.
So that's one member per campus, or?
So for our, for our elementary schools, it is not one per campus, but we looked at feeder patterns, and then we wanted an equal representation across all of our kinder through fifth grade. Middle schools and high schools, we had representation from all of our campuses. Some had more representation for the courses such as astronomy. We only have two high schools that offer that, so we had to kind of get creative with how we formed our committee. And then also, committee members, like I mentioned, were from multilingual services, specialists for science, special services, coaches. We had, we just wanted everybody who had any stake in this game to have the opportunity to make an informed decision.
Can I have one more question?
Yes. 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 And those who were not on the committee, we collected surveys from so that their voice would be heard.
So how many more people did impact the decision with what Ms. Holcomb just shared?
Right. So from our surveys, let me look at my data. I have them printed off here.
Just wondering, because, you know, my thing is, I mean, this is something that's imperative that we have to do, we need to replace?
Absolutely.
It's a mandate or something that y'all think we should?
Well, Kristi's pulling the data. One thing I will say is it was very important that we had voice and representation from all levels, because teaching kindergarten science is not the same as fifth grade science when it's a tested subject. So we had a really vast array of representation for the grade levels, as well as campuses, title, non-title, all of those levels. So I believe our committee, I cannot say enough about the committee work. They not only took the TEA standard rubric that was the Texas Resource Review, but they went a step further and recreated the rubric for CFB because we know we have specific needs and what we're looking for. So we want specific differentiation for our, you know, for all of our learners, right? And for all the different areas that we have to support. And so that is something that the committee did from the representation of the ones that came and met on multiple days. In addition, though, we felt like there's some that don't either, you know, choose to serve on the committee or don't want to serve on the committee, but the responsibility of the committee member is to go back and be the voice for the campus, to inform them of the things that they're doing and what they're learning and being able to help inform. So after we did the first survey, the second part of that was making sure every single person had a voice in that, whether they were able to come to the Texas Room or not. And so all of those links were provided directly to our teachers. Actually, they had that for a long time, and they were able to dive deep with the passcodes and go in and then ask questions. And so from that, then we were able to get feedback. And so Ms. McLean can share the data from the surveys, but there was, it was pretty over, well, the other thing I wanted to share was for both ends, whether it was teacher or committee, they both had the same top two. So when they narrowed down to the top two choices, they were exactly the same. You know, some might have wanted one for one and one for two, but either way, they all narrowed down to the same top two. And then from that point, then it was pretty majority, we saw a pretty clear cut of majority of what the majority wanted for their top choice out of those two.
So for our secondary, all of the teachers, unless they, if somebody was out on maternity leave, all of the teachers completed the survey either by giving the information to their campus representative. So they would say, I'm voting for Creekview, my campus representative wants us to go with this, and this represents the voice of all eight members on our team. So like, I'm going to say 98% for secondary without, there's a few that were gone. And then for elementary school, they were harder, so we had our, our presentations for them on a PD day. So while some who teach science also teach math, social studies, reading, language arts, so we opened up their opportunity to view and give feedback for a much longer period of time. And so without an exact number of how many science teachers we have in elementary, which I'm going to say is 200-something, we had about 30 to 35% of those that were able, that decided, I'm going to look in, I'm going to fill out this survey and give feedback to me and my team.
You might want to share the breakdown of the grade levels, even though it was, that we had all the grade levels in kinder for fifth.
Oh, yeah. We've got all the papers here. So when we did, I wish I could like put this under a document camera for you guys. When we put it out to get feedback from them, we got equal feedback from kindergarten through first grade and across all of our campuses. I wish, like, I really wish I could put this up there. We should have put it in the slide deck. But the feedback represents all of our campuses and all of our grade levels. It wasn't fifth grade over kindergarten. It was, we really got a lot more feedback from some of the primary, because there's so many more of them that are self-contained, where it's more departmentalized at fifth grade. But I feel I'm like, I am behind everything that the committee wants, and I know that it's the voice of our teachers.
Yeah, I just want, you know, we've been through so many changes, and I just want to make sure that everyone is on board, not to mention the expense and our deficit. And it's something that's going to work and enhance the learning of our children, and the teachers will have the support they need to carry on. That's my concern.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. For clarification on the, the funds, so the funds are out of the TEMA fund, and Mr. Shackman, Ms. Brady, and I, all three were at the NTASB meeting most recently, where we met with two of the State Board of Education representatives. They did a roundtable, or I don't know what you call it. They did something where they spoke to us, and they actually talked about this allotment. So this is not coming out of our budget. This is coming out of a state fund, because it's a proclamation, and it's an adoption from the state level that's required. And so the state is funding all of this. Even though we're approving it, the funds are coming from the state technology and instructional materials allotment. I don't know if y'all have anything to add on that, but?
That's exactly right. And that's what I was about to mention, was that this is, when they do call for proclamations, that is the nice thing, is that it is coming from a specified fund. And so we have been very careful to make sure that we have budgeted accordingly. And then also, Ms. McLean can jump in and share, but you might notice that there was an additional request for fifth grade STEM Scopes, with that being our tested grade level. That is a program that they're, or curriculum material they're very used to. We have had good success with it. But the STEM, the HMH Into Science is also part of the recommendation from the elementary group, and it also crosses over into our reading adoption. And so the part about that that's going to be nice is that when the reading modules are introduced, they're either covering a module for science or social studies integrated into the literature. So if it's a science unit for that month, for example, if it's correlated to reading about seasons, then the crossover to the Into Science will show them what they need to be doing in the science curriculum, which will be repetitive vocabulary, deepening the learning, and doing the hands-on around earth science. So it's kind of a crossover connection, so our scope and sequence will be realigned to match both, so that they're not trying to juggle two different types of units at one time, but they will cross over where they fit. It's not perfect 100%, but there is going to be a nice crossover and integration for that. So the reason for the additional in the STEM Scopes fifth grade is to continue having the program that they are used to for a supplement, to be able to continue at the level of rigor that they would need, and it also provides additional resources for Spanish.
Thank you, Ms. McLean and Ms. Holcomb. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Eldridge?
I really, sorry, I really appreciate all your hard work, Kristi. And I will tell you, Ms. Benavides, they have done a great job following what is required to run textbook recommendations. It's a process, and I feel like you've just, with all your charts and graphs, I know that you've, you've created all of that, so.
If it's anything like the eclipse, we know exactly how hard you worked.
But you know what? We, you know, I feel sorry for the students that weren't here because it was amazing. So thank you for all your work on the eclipse as well. So, okay, thank you, ladies. So next up, Mr. Blackburn with our PA system information.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, members of the boards. Good to see everybody. We are asking tonight for additional authorization for the high school PA systems. Just to give you a little bit of background, in August, when we first asked for an authorization, it was about $700,000. That was basically an emergency request because of how poorly the PAs were performing at that time. After that request, we were in the process of trying to see if we could mitigate it, and we were able to make some significant improvements with mitigation efforts. We did add the phone system to the PA system, so we got better coverage that way. Our security engineer was able to improve the performance of the system in several areas. So for that reason, we felt like we had improved the performance enough to take the time to do a more normal procedure and process to procure that work. So we engaged an architect to design, fully design a system. They sat down with our security engineer, went through each campus, they walked each campus, and we feel like we have a good And we feel like we have a good design and scope set for proposers to propose on. Once that was complete, then we were able to get proposals from three different vendors that operate at a scale that's appropriate to a large high school like what, such as we have. The initial quote was based on pretty much conversations with a vendor that had done some elementary schools for us and was familiar with the system, but they weren't really, we didn't feel like they were the most qualified firm to do the work. So we have since now gotten proposals from three firms, had the chance to vet those proposals. As I think is in the, in the recommendation language, the vendor we're recommending is recommended by the manufacturer, has a good reputation. We feel like they'd be an excellent vendor for us and they should be able to bring the systems up to the kind of functionality that we expect for our high schools. Be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Any questions, board members? Ms. Derek?
Mr. Blackburn, what's the timeline on this for completion?
We expect that it'll take four to six weeks per campus. Hopefully they'll have some crews where they can do more than one campus at a time. So I would say best case, we might get a couple of the high schools done this summer pending their labor availability. So hopefully, potentially, we might be able to get done by next Christmas across all four high schools. We'll have to see how that works out, but I would say no later than the end of the next school year.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. All right, Dr. Eldridge, do we have any additional administrative reports?
And that concludes the administrative reports.
All right, so we'll move on to item number four. Board members, do you have any additional questions regarding consent agenda items? All right, seeing no questions, we've reached the end of our agenda for this pre-meeting briefing and we are adjourned at 6:32 PM.
I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM on May 2nd, 2024. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you're free to join me in standing as Amy Ruppert-Berg of Christ United Methodist Church provides a message, followed by the leading of the pledges by Barbara Bush, middle school students, Apparata Paul, leading the pledge to the US flag, and Stephen Booth, leading the pledge to the Texas flag.
Let us pray. Dear loving God, we thank you this evening for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events this year, and for all of our staff members, leaders, teachers, and students. We ask that you bless the school board members as they continue to seek your wisdom and guidance. Be with them this evening as they make decisions for the good of all of those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. Give these dedicated people the insight to lead with integrity and that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. Grant them the humility to always seek your will in all that they do and say. We thank you for Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD and all that you are doing in our community. Please continue to bless our leaders, our teachers, our staff, and our students as we go throughout our week and strive to be your hands and feet. Help us to remember that you love us all and to share your love with everyone we meet. Thank you, God. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Good evening. My name is Stefan Booth and I am an eighth grader from Barbara Bush Middle School.
My name is Apurji Tapal and I'm also an eighth grader from Barbara Bush Middle School.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you so much, students, and Ms. Ruppert-Berg. Well, the rain has given us a break and it resulted in a full house tonight, so thank you guys so much for joining us this evening. We have a lot of recognitions and we have a lot to celebrate this month as we roll into the very last month of the school year with anticipation for a great summer. So, we appreciate you joining us, and as a district, we dedicate all of our efforts and resources to our goal of high expectations for all. The district, the board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items, which may be discussed in closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, board members present are Tara Herbocic, Sally Derrick, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Ileana Garza Rojas, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board will accept comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. When the board addresses Agenda Item Number Three, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board. Next on our agenda is Item Number Two, Special Presentations and Recognizations. Ms. Parnell.
Good evening, President Hatfield, Dr. Eldridge, and members of the board. Well, it's May and we're excited to have so many students here to announce wonderful recognitions. And tonight, we want to start by announcing our CFB Champion Award for May. Sponsored by CFB and Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills, the CFB Champion Award recognizes teachers, employees, students, and/or community members for exemplifying excellence in academics and/or character. Tonight, we are very excited to present the May Champion Award to our students who participated in the Pathfinder's Character and Leadership Program. This initiative has impacted the lives of eighth grade male students at Polk and Blaylock Middle Schools. The program was led by Victor Johnson. As a result of being in the Pathfinder's program, these students have built character and confidence. Their behaviors, character, and attendance have been positively impacted by being in Pathfinder's. They have flourished and are trend centers among their peers. Thank you, students, for setting an example and for participating in this character development program. We're going to ask that you all come forward and take one big group picture. Congratulations, students, and thank you for the example that you have set. Next, we are thrilled to recognize our 2324 Partner of the Year. And this year, we would like to present this award to Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills. The franchise owner is Macy Agnew and her team, and they are with us tonight. And we want to read a few reasons, just a few reasons why this group of individuals is so special to us in this business. They have contributed to CFB in many ways. They actively contribute to student development through their leadership program. They are founding donors of the CFB Giving House. They frequently, a lot of the time, host fundraising events at their location, bringing families together for fun, virtual, and to increase vital funds for CFB schools. Gentry Ward, their community representative, has brought the Chick-fil-A mascot, the cow, to schools for engaging student activities. Macy, the franchise owner, has generously shared of her time to share customer service expertise. And they are also the leading sponsor of the CFB Customer Service Champion Program for the 2324 school year. We appreciate you so much for supporting our schools. You really are making a difference, and we will present this award to you. Thank you. Next, congratulations to Marissa Eterno, an eighth grader from Blaylock Middle School. And Marissa won the National Champion All-American 16-U Title at 118 pounds. Marissa also won the Puerto Rican Nationals and will be representing Puerto Rico at the Pan American Games in June in San Salvador, El Salvador. We are so proud of you, Marissa, and please come forward at this time. Congratulations to McCoy Elementary Student Pranav Fernametti. He's a second grader for winning the overall Award of Excellence in the category of Primary Film Production at the National PTA Reflections Contest. Congratulations, Pranav. Congratulations to Creekview High School Students Bianca Flores and Lauren Hootit for receiving top honors as the state champions at the YMCA Youth and Government State Conference Mood Courts. Ladies, if you'd please come forward. And also, congratulations to National Champion Dawn Kim, Creekview High School student, who was selected as the top speaker at the University of Chicago Mood Court. CFB held its first-ever mascot competition to promote enrollment. Campuses were encouraged to participate by posting their mascots on social media throughout the opening day of enrollment. We had 20 campuses participate in the competition and received 88 posts, and all entries were put into a voting video on Facebook. The campus with the most vote number of comments would win the competition. We had nearly 1,400 votes that were cast, and the winning school and mascot with a total of 373 votes was Good Elementary School. And with us tonight is a special guest from Good Elementary, the Good Gator. And thank you to the Educational Foundation for providing gift cards for the Good Gator and the campus, and we appreciate all of our campuses participating. This was a lot of fun. And so, that concludes our recognitions. So, at this time, we would like to segue into a special presentation. I would like to ask all of the board members to please come down to the front.
So, we're doing trustee reports from the floor tonight. So, tonight is a very special evening because Ms. Derrick has devoted the last six years of service to the school board and is retiring from school boarding. And so, we wanted to present you with some extra love and tell you how much we appreciate you. And Ms. Parnell's going to tell more about your history with CFB.
CFB would like to extend our heartfelt appreciation to Sally Derrick as she completes her final term on the CFB Board of Trustees. Sally has selflessly dedicated herself to our school board since 2018. She's held the positions of Vice President and Secretary during her tenure. With a heart for serving, Sally has actively participated in numerous local boards and committees. Her journey with our schools began in 2009 through PTA, where she tirelessly served as president at Janey Stark Elementary, Vivian Field Middle School, and Newman Smith High School. Additionally, she significantly contributed to the CFB Council PTA as Chair of the Gently Used Book Sale and First VP of Leadership Development. We are very, very appreciative of all you've done for our district and for our students. Thank you so much, Ms. Derrick.
Okay, our next portion is our district announcements. So, I just want you all to know that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so make sure that you appreciate your teachers. And the second thing is, we are still counting attendance, so I need you all to be in school. Parents, make sure they're there. And this is a special time in our meeting because we are announcing our principal, our two new principals tonight. And so, our principal for Freeman Elementary is going to be Roma Jane. So, if you will, her family will come up here, and she's coming in, right?
Yes, and while Ms. Jane makes her way up to the podium, we want to tell you a little bit about her. She's been part of the CFB family for 17 years. She was a former student in CFB. She attended school since first grade and attended Davis Elementary, Blaylock Middle School, and graduated from Newman Smith High School. She's been a chemistry teacher at Turner High School and also served as a Science Department Chair. She was also a Biomedical Academy facilitator and dean for three years there. She's been an assistant principal at CFB for 10 years, serving at Blaylock Middle School in La Vida. We are so happy to have you in this position, and we'd like to congratulate you. And if you have any family members with you tonight, they're welcome to come up for a photo.
Okay, we have one more principal announcement, and that's our principal for Stark Elementary, which will be Christina Estrada. So, we're so excited.
To share a little bit about Ms. Estrada's background, she began in Carrollton as an RL Turner High School, she was a graduate, and then she earned her Bachelor of Science in Bilingual Education from Texas Women's University and a Master's in Educational Administration from Lamar University. She began her career at Carrollton Elementary, teaching kindergarten, second, and third grades. She has been an assistant principal in CFB for the past nine years and most recently has served in the position of AP at Stark Elementary. Congratulations. And if you have family members, if they would like to come forward for a photo.
Well, I think tonight could be classified with leadership. We've got leadership from our community, leadership from our students, amazing work done in the district by our teachers, who are awesome leaders, helping our students grow, and then with the announcement of our new principals, new leadership. So, it is a great May to be in CFB ISD. Yes, there we go. So, our next item is 2D, an update from PTA. Ms. Castillo.
Again, thank you. I'm Dr. Eldridge and our esteemed Board of Trustees and all of our guests. I'm Cindy Castillo, President of CFB ISD Council PTA. We like to start every presentation with our motto, "To Make Every Child's Potential a Reality by Engaging in Empowering Families and Communities to Advocate for All Children." I'd like to share with you a region project we shared with Texas PTA, which highlights some of our accomplishments this year. This is just a small snapshot because it would take hundreds of slides to reflect the achievements of our 36 PTAs, 325 local board leaders, and 6,404 members that have made all of these accomplishments and more possible. So, as you can see, this year, we've had a 10-year high in membership. We had 16 PTAs earn Golden Apple awards, which means that every faculty member joined their PTA. We had 18 reflection award winners at the state level. We had 100% PTA in good standing this year. We had given out $6,000 in grants to our local PTAs based on the earnings that we had from our council fundraisers. And we have two local PTAs that have received the Platinum Voice for Every Child Awards. In addition to that, we have council awards of Early Bird, Road to Success, Bronze for Every Child, Voice for Every Child, and Golden Apple, also at the council level. We've sponsored events, including our Fall and Spring Extravaganza, Reflection Ceremonies, and the Harlem Wizards Games. And these are just a few of the things that are made possible because of the great leadership that we have at all of our local PTAs and the participation of our community and our families and students. So, thank you very much. Next week, we'll be recognizing some of these outstanding 2023-2024 leaders, volunteers, and committee members at our Life Member Ceremony, all selected by the local PTAs for their continued support of PTA and our children. We're looking forward to an even more successful PTA in the year 2024-2025. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. And again, leadership shines, so we really appreciate all of the efforts that all of the PTAs and council PTA have made this year to help make our schools successful. Our next agenda item is Item 2E, an update from the Educational Foundation. Ms. Wald.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, and esteemed school board members. Since last we reported in March, the Educational Foundation has been busily at work, continuing to serve the needs of our students throughout the district. And we are so excited to be here tonight to share three updates. First, the foundation has continued to move forward with the Book Vending Machine Initiative for our campuses, and I am excited tonight, drumroll, to thank you, to announce that we have two new, very strong possibilities. We are literally a week away from adding two new book machines to our CFB campuses. This will bring our total number to nine campuses that will literally impact thousands of CFB students, families, and our community at large. I have to remind you, we just started this Book Vending Machine Initiative with one book vending machine in 2022, and look where we are now. We've come a long way in a very short time. The success of this program is solely due to donor support. I do want to add this, as we near the end of school, we're starting actually to receive some positive testimony from schools with, from campuses with book vending machines, and many are attributing, starting to attribute student success to the book vending machine. So, we're really excited. It's working, the magic is working, and reading is the key. So, we'll have more to report in the months to come. Number two, many do not realize that the Ed Foundation provides support in other ways, including new teacher classroom grants and ongoing support for educators and more. The Ed Foundation was so proud to recently provide funds directly to each one of the CFB Teachers of the Year for their campuses. We know, we all know, educators go into their pockets quite often to help their classrooms, and the Ed Foundation realizes that. We've heard the cry, and we're doing everything we can to bridge that gap. The Ed Foundation is playing a major role in next week, Teacher Appreciation Week, so please stay tuned. We've got several local business development initiatives, the Innovation Academy, and other significant programs throughout the district. Number three, I'm here to report, another drumroll moment. This is the first time this is being published. Our Flagstone Project, our student graduating senior scholarship program, is thrilled to award $93,000 to 78 graduating seniors and one very, very lucky junior. We have one junior scholarship. We were overwhelmed this year at the competition for scholarships. The number of applicants continues to climb, and we thank our district partners, our CCMR program, our counselors, our campus leaders, our educators, and frankly, many of you in this room and watching via live stream. The final decisions for these awards are not easy. Foundation volunteers, I'm on those calls, I often hear this, and have spent the tireless nights, spent long hours, long nights, and including a recent marathon meeting that extended past midnight to decide on candidates. Many working into the early hours, early morning hours, to bring this project along to the success that we see today. And again, we have our donors to thank for this, and of course, our volunteers. Wrapping it up, I know I say this often, but we do sincerely appreciate the opportunity that we have to support the students and the educators and the campuses of CFB. I've said- I've said this earlier, and I got a little emotional, so don't want to do that, but just you should know that from the very bottom of our heart, just how proud we are to serve you. I say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wald. We're very blessed to have the Educational Foundation and all the partners that make the magic happen. At this time, we'll have a brief pause to allow anyone who would like to step out of the meeting to do so. All right, our next agenda item is Agenda Item Number Three, Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Ms. Kennedy, do we have anyone wishing to speak? No? Okay. With no one wishing to speak, we'll move on to the next agenda item. The next agenda item is Item Number Four, Non-Auction Items for Discussion. We will start with Item 4A, our CTE Update.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge and esteemed board members. Our CFB students' futures continue to be in good hands. I'd like to ask LeAnn Stone and Lori Wood to please stand from our district CTE department. And also, I know our dear Kathy Holdage is watching live right now. We love her. Tonight, I'd like to highlight three things: our newest CTE program, industry-based certification successes, and our alignment with the updated TEA expectations. We are all working together to bolster student opportunities as we continue to move in a positive direction. To begin, I'm honored to introduce you to Leon Shulock, Principal and alumnus of Creekview High School, to speak on behalf of our amazing fire instructor, Chris Holterhoff. Chris is unable to be here tonight. Leon?
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, members of the board. As you can see, I am not a firefighter, but I am wearing the shirt in honor of Mr. Holterhoff. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, good evening. My name is Christopher Holterhoff. I am a firefighter with Carrollton Fire and Rescue and the lead instructor for the district's Fire Academy. Until the beginning of this school year, I worked at Carrollton Station Number One, just down Belt Line from this very building, driving engine number 11, 111. Now, I'm excited to be assigned full-time at Creekview High School. I myself am a CFB ISD graduate of Newman Smith High School in '99, and I do not hold that against them. I took the traditional route to college, first going to Trinity University for a Bachelor's of Science degree in Biology, then finishing school at Rice University with a PhD in Biochemistry. After all of that, I found my way to public service as a firefighter. My perspective and my past are unique, and I will guide my students into the post-high school world with a commitment to always do their best, whether it is in fire service, in college, or even in their personal lives and relationships. CFB ISD's situation is unique and advantageous because I am a full-time firefighter, embedded in the school as a fire instructor and resource officer. I bring to Creekview all of the benefits shared and excitement of this tight partnership between the school and the fire department. The best proof of this excitement is that the Carrollton Fire has already donated many thousands of dollars of training equipment that will be used by our students. I have sets of retired bunk gear for training, a rescue stair chair, over half a mile of fire hose, ventilation and vehicle extrication equipment, EMS supplies, and while this hasn't officially been worked out, my chief, Chief Thompson, has expressed a hope next year to donate one of our fire trucks that is slated to be retired from frontline service. So the city of Carrollton is behind our program 100%. The city views this as a way to develop and cultivate talent right here at home. Because this is our first year, I've had the opportunity to invest extra time with future high schoolers at the junior high and elementary school to grow the program for the future. The students I have talked to have been very excited, and I can tell this is going to be a very popular program. Our dual-credit academy through North Central Texas College is still being worked out with legal, but it will produce hireable, mature, and driven young women and men who will reflect extremely well on CFB ISD. They will earn college credit their junior and senior years and be directly ready to test for TCFP certification as firefighters and EMTs right out of high school, an amazing opportunities. Thank you for your time. And I would just like to express my gratitude to the city of Carrollton for allowing this program. I have seen firsthand how great Mr. Holterhoff is and allowing him to be on our campus. He's wonderful for our students and as is his program. And just a quick example, today, we had an opportunity to burn a car using the Carrollton Fire Department, and our automotive class got to go disassemble the vehicle. Our firefighting students, our Fire Academy students got to put out the fire. And then, and then tomorrow, our forensic students will have an opportunity to analyze the vehicle. So it's a great opportunity for all of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Shulock. Before we jump into the numbers for our industry-based certifications, it is important to note that TEA updates the list of accepted IBCs every few years based on the input of industry professionals. This ensures students receive relevant skills for current industry needs. In CFB, we also track industry trends and listen to our advisory boards to adjust certifications annually. Many certification tests are not taken until late April or May, so our 23-24 data is not end-of-year data. With that being said, we have already exceeded last year's totals. Looking at the table, 21-22 was the year of our CTE realignment. Students received 823 certifications. We saw the need to streamline CTE programs that were not leading to a certification or completer status at all four campuses. We increased certifications in the 22-23 year, which was the first year of the realignment implementation. This school year, 23-24, CTE has helped each campus with a clear program of study focus to better prepare students for certifications and completion. While the testing has not finished for this school year, the reported numbers show year-over-year improvement and helped us to create our end-of-year goal. With the goal of 1,750 IBCs for this year, you may be wondering, how are we going to get there? We currently have 795 exam vouchers that have been ordered for students to take in the coming weeks. We are taking the number of remaining vouchers and using a conservative estimate for passing rates, which could help us reach our goal. The sky's the limit, and as we prepare our students and teachers, we know our certification numbers will continue to climb. Taking a closer look at the pathway to certification, every CTE program in our district offers students a chance to earn at least one TEA-designated certification. I've chosen an example that illustrates how a student can earn a certification. Cosmetology students, for example, have only one certification test available in the final year of the program. The cosmetology program follows the state requirements for licensure, including classroom and salon hours, culminating in a state-approved cosmetology license. We have 165 students in the cosmetology program at RLT. Beyond their classwork and salon practice hours, they offer monthly salon days where community members are able to schedule hair appointments with a Turner cosmetology student. The salon service dates and times for the school year are located on the RLT website, along with appointment request forms. They also recently hosted a mentorship day where local cosmetology professionals spent the day inspiring our students with hands-on experiencing, experiences, and networking. We have 37 cosmetology students in their final year of the program, who are in the process of taking the cosmetology boards. Turner Cosmetology alumni are employed throughout the DFW in certain, in different salons such as Luxe, Drybar, Floyd's, Voss, Salon D, Sport Clips, and many are self-employed. So what about funding? Based on the state funding formula, CTE courses receive weighted funding for CTE full-time equivalent students. The funding facilitates our program expenses and increases significantly from the introductory to the advanced courses. These dollar amounts are visible and verifiable on the summary of finances, which demonstrates the growth of CTE enrollment in CFB. CFB is also reimbursed by the state for transportation of students who opt to join a CTE program of study at a home campus that is not their designated feeder pattern. Also, once a student passes an IBC exam, the state will reimburse the district for the cost of the exam. We are pleased with the reimbursement amount from last year, and this year, we expect it to increase because of the additional exams we are offering. So how do we prepare our students for certifications? We provide instructional material based on industry standards. We use curriculum specific to certification prior to the exam. We provide practice tests, and also PD for teachers offering new certification exams. These methods help to ensure greater student success. Remember, many of these certifications are the same exams that adults take for employment and promotion. Here are two examples of textbooks used in the preparation for certification tests in cosmetology and Comp TIA A+ right here. This is one of the many cosmetology textbooks, the black one, that prepares our students over the years of coursework for their licensure exam. Another example is this Comp TIA A+ textbook that covers materials for that certification exam. With an overall increase in certifications, we plan to track student career decisions and their futures with the use of their certifications. Regardless of decisions they make post-graduation, students have a certification to fall back on no matter what. We often field questions regarding the available certifications in CFB, so I thought it would be helpful to list them by career cluster. Our goal is to have every student earn at least one certification. I won't read all of these to you for the sake of time, but I did want to provide them to you in a concise and organized manner that represents our district offerings. As you can see, there are many certifications offered in each career cluster. I'd like to take a look at the Transportation, Distribution, and Logistics cluster. Last year, 178 certifications were earned by the students in the Transportation Program. This year, we expect to surpass 200 certifications. The earned ASE certifications are the same that you see at your local auto shops and dealerships, making our students employable right away. The complexities aligning courses with certifications and programs of study involve the orchestration of multiple departments. CTE is grateful for the collaboration with our Counseling Department. Their knowledge and ongoing monitoring of course selections ensure students are finding a program they enjoy and to achieve completion. The growth that we continue to see within CTE is an advantage to draw families to our Districts are required to ensure students earn an IBC connected to specific courses in a program of study. In order to boost the numbers of students attaining relevant certifications, TEA has elevated the expectations for CTE departments. Just last year, students only had to earn an IBC. But beginning with the class of 2026, that's our current sophomores, our students must complete, be completers earning four credits in a program of study plus an IBC to count towards accountability. Through our consistent collaboration with our counselors and CTE teachers, we believe this is an attainable goal. While the expectations from the district and the state for student achievement are very important, the impact that this has on the students and their future can be a generational change-maker. I'm happy to share some feedback from one of our graduates at last year's Biomed reunion. I am a Turner alumni, a registered nurse at Parkland in Labor and Delivery. I am really thankful for this program. I was able to get my Certified Nursing Assistant and a Certified Veterinarian Assistant. There are many stories similar to this one. CTE has changed so much. It's not your grandparents' vocational education where you only had woodshop and home economics. CTE is so much more now. It prepares students to work, to go to college, to join the military, or a host of other In CFB, CTE is vital to the success of our students. We are proud of our partnership with the city of Carrollton. We are proud of our partnership with the city of Carrollton in getting our Creekview Firefighter Academy off the ground. Along with this, our programs are growing more robust, and we are excited to see the numbers of IBC successes following suit. As we follow the TEA alignment, we expect an increase in CTE allocated funds from the state. Our goal of 1,750 certifications is based on our continuous improvement, which supports students and our district's accountability rating. With all the amazing offerings in CTE, we are looking forward to the feedback from the program evaluation to have experts verify our work and provide refinements to make our programs even better. In CFB, we create opportunities. A special thank you tonight to the Board of Trustees for your continued support with our community partners and our campuses. You are instrumental in helping our students to become college, career, and military-ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gillen. Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Derek?
Thank you, Ms. Gillen, for the presentation. I attended the biomed alumni event last year where that student had that quote, and it was really neat to see how the investment that we made in those kids years ago has paid off for them now. It was really, it was exciting to see. I have just questions for you. Are students required to take the certification exam if they are in a class that has a certification associated with it? Is it a requirement or it's an option?
We strongly encourage them to take the certification exam. As I mentioned earlier, in 2026, the courses that they take to lead up to the IBC, we will not receive accountability unless they have all of those courses and the IBC. So it makes good sense for our students, as they go through the courses, the culmination of those courses, to finish with an industry-based certification that the state has designated.
Okay, so there's an expectation there that if you're doing the work, you might as well take the test at the end.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then just curious on, I know the goal is 1,750 for this year. I would be curious, which this is a number we don't have yet, but how many, the 1,750 was of how many kids taking IBCs? So at some point when all of that is finalized, I'd just be curious to see what our pass percentage rate looks like for all of our kids that are taking the tests.
And we'll have that probably by the end of June because our cosmetology students will be testing their final test in June, the hands-on experiences. And then this month, we have a lot of vouchers out where students are finishing up, and teachers are going to be entering that into teams.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Brady?
Thank you for the presentation. I think on slide number two or three, you had the percentage that the state reimburses us for each CTE program that we have back, you just had it.
Did I pass it?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it that one? No.
No, I think it's back this way.
That one.
CTE funding.
Yes. So how many of the, how many of the courses that we have are not required by the state or not offered by the state, or there isn't an IBC offered in that area? So which one falls on level one? How many of our programs fall on level one?
Okay, well, the 10% funding that we receive is like a one-off. So if a student just decides to take dollars and cents or goes to another program of study and says, "I really want to take that course," but is not going to continue with other courses, that's the 10%.
Oh, I see.
And then the 28% is if they take a level one or two CTE course, so it's together within a program of study. It follows that, that program. And then the big percent, the 47%, is when they take the level three and four, and that's our practicum, and those are more of the advanced courses.
I see. Thank you.
Just adding on to that question, is the percent on the basic allotment?
Yes. So, so the allotment for our students, 6,000, 6160, and so this is on top of that. The funding is, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all my questions. Any other questions? Mr. Shackman?
Thank you very much for the great information. This is exciting because what you're showing us is roughly one in five of our high school students is getting IBCs. And is there any study or information that would help us understand, can we expect this to grow?
We are working very hard with counseling, CCMR, CTE, in our, to make sure that everyone has, in fact, we've made a little cheat sheet for our counselors, so they really understand the courses that they need to be in to lead to that IBC, so that we have both the courses and the IBC for the accountability piece. So I think that we will get to a cap at some point, you know, for so many certifications that we can offer, and we want to be, we want to be very, we want to be good stewards of that for the programs that we have for our students. We want to make sure students are interested in those programs and that we fill those programs. I do have the enrollment by each career cluster for you, and then also I have the little QR code for the salon, just in case you wanted to make an appointment. So I do have that for you.
Great. One other question, any other question? Mr. Brachek?
I've long said and publicly stated that I think the opportunities that we provide through our CTE programs for our kids and the, no matter their path that they're choosing is one of the best things about, I mean, there's a lot of good things about CFB, but that's one of the best. Just meeting different students' needs. However, I'm going to echo some of the, the comments, and I've long said this, is that while these are all good opportunities for our students and we want our students to take advantage of them, we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the students and, and some of the comparison data and the percentage and taking and pass, as well as I know some of this tracking is in its infancy in the review of the programs, but you know, how do we track the success post-CFB? You know, are they moving right into a job? Are they like our lovely nurse from the, you know, from the, the biomed program that is doing that? But I think that's an important part. If they're not utilizing that after, I don't want to say that's a failure, but it's, you know, did we do it right?
Yes.
So I think we need to figure out that that's an important part of the analysis that we need to make and be really honest with ourselves on what success is.
So in speaking with Dr. Eldridge, I know that that is something that is a priority for her, and, and so the CTE department, we're going to begin tracking those students with an exit interview. And so, and that will be with the teachers because they have the relationships with the students. So when they leave as a senior, they'll have an exit interview, what their plans are. We will have a, we have a kind of a diagram of what we want them to ask them, and then also to get a personal email, not their CFB email, so that we can contact them once they leave. So, yes.
Additional questions? You mentioned a program evaluation. Can you tell us, what you mean, like a new program evaluation that's happening?
Well, in 2021 and then in 2023, the state, the CTAT organization, we, with our Carl Perkins funds and to also meet some of the needs and requirements of our, our grant, we had the state come in and look at all of our programs before we realigned and after. And so I have that report. But we're also, today, we actually met with the Region 10 person, and for about four hours, several of us met to look at our programs, discuss some areas of growth, areas where we're really doing well. And so we look forward to hearing his opinion after our meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Gillen, and to the entire team for all the work that you do with our kids. In the end, that's what it's all about, is the great things that they do in our community and beyond. So we really appreciate all the efforts that go into making sure they're successful. Thank you very much. And Mr. Shulak, please tell Fireman Holderhoff how exciting it is, and can, can board members come to the fire? I mean, that sounds like a lot of fun. I want to go forensics tomorrow. I wish I didn't have to work. All right, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, item 4B, which is our attendance update. Dr. Hamlin?
Dr. Eldridge, Ms. Hatfield, and members of the board, I truly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, give you another update on our attendance. And tonight's really a celebration, and you'll see that here in the next few slides. We've done a lot of, a lot of great work this year on attendance with the main focus. If you remember, we kind of kicked off the school year with a slide that kind of looked like this. We talked about an attendance goal that we wanted to set based on our baseline last year, 92.7%. And we set that 1% goal that we wanted to have by the end of this school year. As you can see, our projected end of the year number is at 94.4%. That is a 1.7% increase from last year. We went for, we're going for that 1%. We're starting to get close to that number that we had pre-COVID, which I'm extremely excited about. Now, when you think about that number, 94.4%, we talked a little bit earlier about the importance of the funding that comes with ADA, right? If we finish with that 1.7% increase, that will bring in additional ADA revenue of about $1.2 to $1.5 million next year. That's huge. And when we set this goal, you've seen in this slide before, we've set this goal, we, you know, what's our plan? How are we going to reach that goal? It's just not going to happen. So we created a 22, 23, 24 attendance plan this year, and we really wanted to kind of break everything down, all the numbers from the previous year. Where do these kids fall in the certain ranges? And then we talked about having an exceptional contender, those are the kids that are here 95% of the time, regular attenders, those kids are here 91% of the time or more. And then the two areas of concern, it was a chronic absenteeism, and then anyone that was 90% or less for attendance, and then the severe chronic. And so when we broke that down, we shared some data based on 2223 numbers, and you see in this slide, the blue bar graph, we put those two together, the exceptional and regular attenders, last year, we were at 75% of our kids were here 91% of the time or more. But if you look at the chronic and severe chronic, we had 25% of our kids last year that were not here at school consistently. They were anywhere from 80% or lower. And so obviously, that was a huge concern. With all the work that we did this year at the campus level and district level, you can see, if you take our two regular and exceptional categories, we've gone from 75% last year to 85% this year. Huge gains. When you look at the chronic and the severe chronic areas, last year we were at 25%. This year, we're at 15%. So we have a 10% decrease. So our kids are in school a whole lot more than they were last year. So then you're going to say, well, how did that happen? Well, that happened because, there you go, that happened because when we created our plan, we had those five core actions. We really wanted our campuses and the district's student services to work together with, right? We talked about how we're going to monitor attendance, monitor that data. Student Services worked with our campuses, our attendance officer worked with our campuses. We would share lists of kids of concern. We had a list of concerns, they had a list of concerns, and we'd work together to make sure those kids and those parents are receiving communications from the campus level, whether their attendance notes or attendance warning letters for the 90% or their truancy letters, for anyone that has three or more unexcused absences in a four-week period. And then when they have five or more, and then they get 10 or more, which leads to truancy court. This year alone, we had almost 500 truancy court referrals. That was huge. But it's getting those parents involved in that process. That's that last step. We talked about all the fun things that we did with, you know, recognizing the good attenders as well as the improved attenders. And you've seen some reports and, and presentations earlier this year where at the elementary level, we recognized those perfect attendance kids with, by that strong relationship we have with the Carrollton Fire Department, came out with the fire truck, and the kids got to engage with the fire department. At the secondary level, our relationship with the Educational Foundation, every campus had the opportunity to select through a drawing, two students with perfect attendance to receive gift cards. So those are just examples of how we really, really pushed that campaign. And then one of the other areas of those, of the five core actions was how are we going to remove barriers? Well, our, our nursing department, they're working with kids that if there is, you know, excessive attendance, is there a medical issue that we needed to know about? So our nurses got involved. And also, we used a car service for transportation for kids who could not get to school, especially with our McKinney-Vento students. We have a car service that we use from time to time to make sure they're getting to school and getting home okay. So those are just examples of how we made this happen. This slide kind of shows some big highlights across the district this year. When you look at the campus, the campus that had the highest level of attendance this year is going to be McCoy Elementary at 97%. The grade level that attended school the most this year is fifth grade across the entire district at 93%. The most improved grade level are our graduates, our 12th graders. Pretty impressive, I wouldn't have thought that. They increased 3% to 92%. The most improved campus this year, Turner High School, they were up at 92.8%. And what I'm really proud about is that, that one column there where it talks about campuses that met or exceeded our goal. We had 89% of our campuses, 33 out of 37 campuses, met or exceeded the goal that we were after this year. You look at that column on the right, you talk, our number of students with perfect attendance, we had over 1,000 students this year with perfect attendance, 437 at the elementary level and 634 at the secondary level. Some kind of three takeaways, you have our current attendance rate, our current attendance where it's at 24,542. We're about 150 kids more than we had in December, so the number's going up. And then our average daily attendance obviously at that 94.4%, which that 1.7% increase is a huge celebration, not only for academics, but for that revenue that's going to be coming in for next year. And then just having this new attendance plan that has really allowed us to have that streamlined, laser-like focus on the attendance, not only at the district level, but at the campus level. You know, we didn't start this until I believe it was November, we put it in our district improvement plan, and this obviously is going to be in all campuses' campus improvement plan as well. They'll be able to put their own campus data in there, and they'll be able to set their own goals in order for them to continue to do the things they're doing. And I will just want to give a big shout out to all the departments that are involved, from communications to student services, but to every individual campus. You've seen a lot of things on social media where our principals took this serious. They had a lot of fun with it through TikTok, through all kinds of Instagram pages. They're doing their own incentives, not only the ones that were supported by the district, but they were just, they, they had a ball with this. And even yesterday, or this week when we had the luncheon, I had several principals come up to me and say, hey, we got to up our game, we got to have more competitions because I want everyone to know that my campus improved the most. And I'm like, well, I don't think your campus did, but, because I was already heard from somebody else over there. So they, they're really about the competition, they really want to continue to improve the attendance rate at every individual campus. And that concludes my presentation. Don't take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hamlin. Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Derek?
Really?
Dr. Hamlin, it's my last night. I have to say something about everything. Just kidding. Thank you for the presentation. I, I think this is great news because this is proof that the efforts that everyone made are working, like we're seeing that in the numbers. So I think we need to remember to continue the conversation. I think we need to be talking about it everywhere we go, like we say it at the board meetings even. We need kids in school because it's that important. So I think, I would hope that this conversation will continue as a district into the future, that everywhere we go, we, the opportunity is there to remind people that we need kids in school because it's so important. Because the next thing that I have to believe that's coming with this is our academic results.
Absolutely.
Because kids are in school learning, which is where we need them. So I mean, I just, I wholeheartedly believe that that's just going to lead to better reports on outcomes, and I mean, it's all the things that, why, the why, why we're here. So, thank you.
You're right, and all these numbers are connected, from the academic achievement to graduation rates, it's, it's all connected. But I will say, before I walk away, is Yana, we're doing this big fast pass push this year with our registration, and we already have, and if you remember, we typically average about 2,400 kids that are registered before June 1st. We already have over 10,000 kids that have registered for next school year, and we've been doing this for one month. And it usually takes three and a half months to get to 2,400 kids. And so we're doing a lot of great things. And so we're doing a lot of great things.
Any additional questions? Ms. Garza, you're in. I'm looking at you, Ms. Garza Rojas.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have a question for you. First of all, great work. This is awesome. I'm glad it's trending in a positive direction. So I know you mentioned for the chronic absentees, you said that we're giving them maybe some nurse help, or what other help are we giving the campuses to help them with the chronic absentees?
Well, I mean, it just depends because there are so many different reasons why kids are not in school. But I mean, we have counseling support, we have parent education opportunities. We have the letters, like I said, a whole lot more outreach. We have home visits that we've, we've done this year. Just all of those type of things that we have to do. Every student's different, so every student's needs are different. So it just really all depends what we can do. But we are doing so many different things, things that we haven't done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Benavides?
Thank you, thank you very much. I was thinking about the ten thousand that have enrolled, and we've discussed numerous times about the scatter. Was there difficulty? Was this online? Do they go to their home campuses? How were the ten thousand enrolled?
Well, I think it's, it's a combination of many things. I think, one, as you know, we've really tweaked the system. We have a better, really webpage facing, obviously the communication. The online process seems to be much easier. There are still questions, absolutely. But I'll tell you, we have parents come into student services every single day for that hand-over-hand, side-by-side support. And it's, it's getting done. So that's just a huge, huge plus. And honestly, like I said, it's, it's, the entire district's working together to make sure, make sure it happens. But we're, we're getting a lot of positivity out of our new process.
That's great. I was thinking about ten thousand kids and ten thousand immunizations. I mean, is that something that comes every year? I mean, what's the impact on our system for that many children that might need them?
Well, you know, you really have those, obviously, the kids that are starting out because immunizations really hit us in certain years, right? It's really kindergarten years, and it's really when you go to that seventh grade. But, you know, I know health services, they're doing, they're having people come in every single day. So it, it's happening. And we'll see, really, I don't want to get too excited because, you know, summertime is really, really happens. Now, we are going to have some enrollment extravaganzes, which we already have vaccinations clinics set up for that. So, you know, we're, we're ready for it when it happens.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Hamlin. To my fellow board colleagues, I think this is also a testament of when we put our focus behind something with intentionality, and then we set a goal and really set high expectations, that we have amazing team members, amazing administration, amazing campus leaders, all the way down to the classroom teachers that are paying attention to kids when they're not there. And so thank you to all of our community, our school community, for all the efforts you guys are doing because it's clear that it's working. And I can't wait to see the future because when we have kids in school, I agree with Ms. Derrick, student achievement's going to rise. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to take a brief five-minute break, and we will come back.
The consent agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of all the consent agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action being taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Ms. Brady?
I'd like to pull letter S, as in Sam.
We have one removal of S. Any other removals? Okay. If there are no other items to be removed, I have a motion regarding the consent agenda as amended. Ms. Derek?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception, approve the consent agenda with the exception of letter S.
All right, I have a motion for Ms. Derek. Do I have a second? Mr. Shackman is a second. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. The next agenda item is item number six, items for discussion and/or action. We have an item that was removed from consent, so we will proceed to 6A. The title of the item is, give me one second, um, the RFQ 2024-03052 for professional services for construction. Ms. Brady?
Um, I believe we have the opportunity to hear from some other vendors that might be of greater value for us as a district, and so we'd just like to move this agenda item to June. Please.
Okay. So with that, um, moving that agenda item to the next month, I believe we do not need to have a motion for that. We just will table that item? Is that, if that's correct?
I believe so.
Yes. All right. Then we will move to our next item, item 6B, consider and approve amendment number one to CMAR 2023-10050, the 2023 bond package number nine, uh, with Baffy or Betty. Mr. Blackburn?
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, members of the board. This item is for, um, it's the first phase of this construction package, renovation package, and as we've discussed before, we're trying to get the work we can underway. And so this is basically air conditioning units and a couple of roofs. At, uh, so we've got air conditioning units at McLaughlin Strickland, as you have there in your description, as well as roof replacement work at Stark and Vivian Field Middle School. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Board members, do you have any questions? Ms. Benavides?
In our last renovation to Vivian Field, the roof was not touched?
No, ma'am. I don't believe so. I get lost across all the different campuses, and some have full roof replacements and some have partial, so this would only be for roofs that are exceeding their warranty period, which is typically 20 years.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Ms. Herbacheck?
Um, yeah, Ms. Hatfield, could you just confirm the conversations from the bond oversight committee? I was not able to attend due to commitment, and, um, as the liaison to the BOC, and Ms. Hatfield attended in my place, so I just want confirmation for our colleagues at discussion.
Absolutely. So I did attend the BOC meeting, and as a part of the presentation, they were provided with a list of things that would be coming before the board, um, soon, and including this item and the next item that's up for the agenda, so they're aware, and there were not any concerns, um, shared, as these are pretty routine items, things that, um, don't have any concern about any adjustments we might make in the future with campuses. Any additional comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. So, um, this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take action? Ms. Brady?
I'll make a motion that we approve. Item 6B, right? Yes, 6B.
I have a motion for Ms. Brady. Do I have a second? I have a second for Ms. Garza Rojas. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. The next item is item 6C, consider and approve amendment number two to CMAR 2023-10050, the 2023 bond package eight with Crossland Construction. Back to you, Mr. Blackburn.
This package is the second part of, excuse me, this phase is the second part of this package, uh, for Crossland's, uh, group of renovation projects, and this is specifically for, uh, air conditioning unit replacement at Lava Uta Elementary.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? And as I mentioned in the last one, this was also, um, shared with the BOC at their meeting, with no concerns. All right, seeing no, um, questions, do I have a, this item is marked for possible action. Ms. Brady?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 6C.
All right, I have a motion for Ms. Brady. Do I have a second? I have a second for Ms. Benavides. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. Can you guys do that one more time? Sorry. Thank you. Um, all those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed, the motion carries. My head might have been swiveling a little too fast. Um, all right, thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Our next agenda item is item number seven, closed meeting as authorized by the Texas Government Code, section 551.074A1, deliberation regarding appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a teacher. Item 7A, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, including the discussion of a recommendation to terminate the probationary contract of Michael Lee and Nicholas Ornelias. At the end of the contract period, in the best interest of the district, in accordance with Texas Education Code, section 21.103, the board will now move into closed session. Audience members, you are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess and move into the conference room for deliberations. The time is now 8:27 PM.
We are back in open session and the time is now eight fifty-three P M. Our next item is item number eight. Reconvene an open meeting for possible action regarding items discussed in closed meeting. Item eight A, consider and take possible action on recommendation for termination of a probationary contract for Michael Lee and Nicholas Ornellis at the end of the current contract period in the best interest of the district in accordance with the Texas Education Code, section twenty-one point one zero three. Board, this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take action? Ms. Brady?
I move to terminate the probationary contracts of Michael Lee and Nicholas Ornellis at the end of the current contract period in the best interest of the district.
I have a motion for Ms. Brady. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ascarz Arrojas. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all of those in favor raise your hand. All of those opposed? By a vote of six in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item number nine. Closed meeting as authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to section five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five fifty-one point zero seven two, real property, five fifty-one point zero seven four, personnel matters, five fifty-one point zero seven six, security devices, five fifty-one point zero eight two, school children, district employee disciplinary matter or complaints, five fifty-one point zero eight two one, personally identifiable student information, five fifty-one point zero eight four, investigation. Item nine A, conduct the superintendent's formative evaluation. The board will now move into closed session. Audience members, you are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess and move into the conference room for deliberations.
We are back in open session and the time is now 11:00 PM. The board will move on to the next agenda item, number 11, comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. Board members, does anyone have any comments you wish to make related to the posted agenda? All right, seeing no comments, we have reached the end of our agenda and we are now adjourned at 11:01 PM.